On favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. Public comment. Do we have any students? No. Is there any public comment? All right. I wasn't sure if he was getting enough to come up or not. All right, we'll go on to number four, discussion items. A reminder that we have the principal interview committee training on April 4th at 6:00 in the high school cafeteria. And then we will hold the interviews on April 22nd, 23rd, and 24th with the community group interviewing at 6:30. Our special board meeting at 5:00 on April 24th. And then, of course, our regular board meeting on April 23rd. We're gonna have a busy week coming right back from vacation.
Right, but wasn't the training two minutes?
We made it one night. Yep. Did you put in April 3rd?
I think that was the 4th, Thursday. So Thursday night.
Yep, April 4th. All right, and then we have the Scholastic Achievement Dinner. Looking at the week of October 28th through November 1st, is there any preference as to one day or the other?
Mondays and Fridays are bad for me.
What night?
Mondays and Fridays are bad.
Monday?
They're the worst.
Which day? Monday and what?
And Fridays are the worst for me.
Okay. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Tuesday through Thursday?
Usually better.
Okay. Probably be Tuesday, I would imagine. Okay. But we're putting together the calendar. That's why we're asking. Yeah, and right now, I'm fine with that. Okay. We have the training for superintendent search process. Cory is still waiting to hear back on the May 14th, 15th, or 16th. I think they gave us the date of the 15th. I did email her. Oh. Oh, did you? I'll verify.
Yeah, she had emailed 15th.
Miss Eddy, okay. So, May 15th. And that's at 5:00 PM. Right. All right, and then our policy committee meeting, April 29th at 5:30? Or April 3rd? Yep. For to May 2nd.
29th would be good for me.
Okay.
Bless Paul here a minute. What is that day?
All right, so we will find out. I think that's a Monday.
Good for 29th. Mondays are good.
So that would be at 5:30.
Okay. 29th. If it's good with Paul, yep.
Right, I'll verify that with them. Okay. All right, I believe that's all we have for discussion items. Was there anything else? There were no correspondence. We are up to number six. We are going to have two presentations. We'll start with Mr. Perry Dewey from DCM Bosse's. And in your orange folder, there should be a... Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. I have a folder for you that has more information in it. I didn't realize that Cory was going to make copies, but that's great. In this folder, on the left-hand side, you will find a copy of the presentation, which I see you already have. And then also, there is a copy of the district or administrative budget for the Bosse's for this year as well. My purpose tonight, though, is to talk about the career destinations, but I will also talk to you about the budget if you would like. I can answer any questions that you have, or if I don't know the answer, I'll get the answer for you. The Career Destinations Project is a project that we put together over the past year. When I first came to the Bosse's, it was very apparent to me that, as a rural upstate New York community, we are suffering from many of the same symptoms that have happened and occurred to upstate New York since 2008 in a recession. We're losing population, and one of the things that's very detrimental to us at this point in time is just a critical mass of people. We're feeling it in our school districts. As you can see, the projected change continues over time. We aren't going to get any better unless we start to take some action and try to change the way in which people are viewing, I think specifically, our young children are viewing their future in our own communities. And so, one of the other things we quickly looked at, and you'll have to excuse me if my back is to you, I like to do that, but I'm not going to be any place where it's not going to affect some folks, so. Skilled workforce in the region, as we did some numbers, it kind of looks like in a 25-mile radius of Sydney, currently, there's about 100 job openings that are not filled. And skilled workforce entering retirement age in the next five years is about 20%. And so consequently, there's going to be significant work in this region over the next five years. And unfortunately, we're very concerned that we don't have a labor force to fill that need. So, our student enrollment has also suffered, as many of you know. I know that the educators know this, and I know that probably most of our public knows this. As we move into the future, as we continue to lose families, obviously, families have children, and those children attend our schools. And over the... Since 2008, we've lost, well, and this says 2006, about 21%. Since 2008, the number gets a little bit bigger because it's about 23%. So consequently, that trend is not changing, and some of our school districts have lost... I mean, that's an average over the 16 Bosse's school districts, ascending component districts, and some of our districts have lost more than that. So, significant change. So, we convened, not this past January, but the January of 2018, we convened a group of people, about 20, or excuse me, about 57 business and industry leaders, government officials, Senator Seward, Senator Crouch, Senator Axay over there, our Chamber Commerce folk were there as well, and key business and industry people and people from some of our major branding organizations or philanthropy. And we talked about this, and so, one of the things that we really struck home with, and I mean, when I did the presentations of that group, it wasn't a career destinations program I was presenting, I was just basically presenting these three pieces, okay? In our region, in order to maintain workforce, we got to curb the loss of population. That's the first thing. It hurts our region's economic growth. We are going to close our school districts based on population. It's not going to be because of money or lack of funding, okay? It's going to be a lot, just the critical mass of people and students. And a lot of our social programs and our government and many of the things that we rely on need that critical mass as well. And so, that's the first kind of objective of the program. And the second would be to provide the skilled workforce, replace retirement of the workforce and the job openings that exist currently, okay? And that's important because we need a skilled workforce. If we don't have that workforce, then our businesses and industries are going to move out, which is going to exacerbate this problem because as they move out, they're going to take the people that are working and the families that are associated with those, you know, businesses and industries. And so, we need to retain those businesses. And then the third thing is to promote local job sustainability, okay? Not only do we need to keep the skilled workforce, we need to create a sustainable flow of workers to replace the people that are retiring, and in order to provide growth in the region, we've got to stabilize things. So, why the Bosse's? So, once we had the committee together and once we talked about this, we were charged, the Bosse's was charged by that group, to lead the way in having an ad hoc group that would create program or programming that potentially would be able to address those three objectives. And so, as that committee formed and then we moved forwards, it became very evident that the Bosse's is the only organization in the region educationally that can touch all students in every school district, okay? We can provide programming for them, we can provide professional development for teachers, administrators, and we also have the ability to connect to... Well, the other piece of it is this, we, our vision is to propel regional growth and provide premier educational services. So, that fit as well. And then, the other piece of it is, is we have strong partnerships already established with businesses and industry. We already have about 250 contacts. We already work with our CTE programs to provide work-based learning experiences for kids, connect kids to those jobs and jobs that are out there and the jobs that are available. So, we have that expertise as well. And then, you know, we can, we also have the ability to understand career pathways and how folks need to either move to technical, can move through high school into a job or to a technical school or to a college and then come back and retain a position in this region. The program itself is really based on developing relationships, okay? When I was a child, and I'll give you just a real quick synopsis of my experiences as a child, I wanted to be a veterinarian, and I knew I wanted to be a veterinarian. I grew up on a dairy farm. I was about five years old, I wasn't going to school yet, and a veterinarian came and did an operation on a cow. I was, you know, glued to that. That just was fascinating to me, and that's... And so, I told the veterinarian after he was done, "I'm going to be a veterinarian when I grow up." I was convinced. He not only was on the, you know, farm a lot, but he also, every time he came to the farm, he asked me, you know, "You still want to be a veterinarian?" "Yeah, I want to be a veterinarian." And then he said to me, he says, "You know, you've got to keep good grades, you've got to get into school," you know? And he continued to tell me and check in on me, and he continued to show me things when he came about the profession, and he mentored me into really getting, becoming a good student, okay? And knowing that I had a direction and a focus. We need to give that gift to every kid because that is engaging. If there's any teachers in the room, they know this. If you engage a child, you educate a child. If you don't engage that child, that child is not going to receive an education. And we need to provide them with opportunities to explore careers at a very young age, not in seventh grade. They need to start to explore careers at a very young age, like I did in that experience. And they need somebody, an adult, a responsible adult who cares about them, cares about the region, and wants to achieve those three goals that we already have. And what this program hopefully will do is create those relationships. That's really the bottom line. In the... We have already reached out, this is our first year of implementing the program, we got started about mid-year, so it's not really, this timeframe needs to be modified. We started out with three schools. We hired a person by the name of Mark Perna, who was a national consultant who does this work on a national level and does it in other communities. We've adopted his career tree approach, basically providing students with the opportunity to have the right programming for the right purposes and the right reasons. So that they are focused on being successful at gaining a career, whether it be in, you know, one of the 13 programs that we have or, you know, the programs that you would have here. The other thing, too, is this is not a career and technical education program. I want to make that clear. This is a program designed for every student in every school district. Currently, we take in about 44% of the juniors and seniors into the career and tech center for career and tech programming, okay? So, there's a whole 56% out there that are not getting what I would say significant training to understand what they need to do in order to get to careers. And it's not anybody's fault. The guidance counselors are taking on different responsibilities with a lot of mental health issues and those types of things, and your administrators can tell you this, they are worked. They are busy people. Our teachers are busy people, and they have to focus on getting kids through school and not necessarily always focusing that schooling on a career or a career destination, if you will. And that's where I think we can help. So, in the first year, we're going to focus on the 9th through 12th grade. We're going to provide professional wellness, teachers, business and industry leaders. I'm doing a lot of this type of work so that I'm trying to get to every, all 16 school districts and board meetings to talk about the program so there's an awareness. And then, we're going to work closely with our colleges to establish those connections and then the infrastructure of the programming. We're very, we are being very successful there. We've hired a coordinator already, and that happened in February. That person is, the startup money came from a grant, and so, so far, we were able to get the program going without any local support from our school districts as well. So, I'm pretty pleased about that. In the second year, we're going to go down to the middle school. We've got, like I said, three schools that were involved in this to start the pilot. We're also going to try to focus on graduates who have been unsuccessful graduating from college, okay? There's a lot of young people who have gone to college, a significant number that have come home, they have a high school diploma, but they don't have any skill. And so, providing, because if you stop and think about it, if there's a need and it's that urgent, as I showed you before, it's going to take too long for us to wait for the kids that are in school to fill those positions. We've got to do something now. These kids are key, those kids that have gone away, came back, have high school diplomas, but don't necessarily have skills and maybe don't know about the jobs that we have available to them. And so, we need to connect employers to those students as fast as possible. And then, we want to provide, and so, how do we do this on a grand scale? What we do is we provide a stipend for somebody in the school district, it could be a counselor, could be a coach, could be a teacher, could be a fair professional, somebody that knows the community, lives in the community, knows the kids. Every community has one or two of these people that just knows everybody, and if we can connect with that person, provide them with a stipend, and then have them connect us to those kids, then the program's going to work. That's the only way. This has to be a true partnership with the school district and the Bosse's program of career destination. And then, in the third year, we're going to reach down to the pre-K through middle school. We're going to fully implement the career tree. Everybody would have access to that, and so, the local champions or the people that would be working with the school, in the school district with the students would have access to that as well. We would provide the other services that we have at the Bosse's that would support the programming. And then, in the last bullet, this is not me, I'm not a blogger, I'm not a tweeter, I'm not a social media person, so that would be somebody else at the Bosse's. I do not do that, that would be promoting the program. Measures of success, ultimately, our goal is sustain our local businesses and the number of students and the number of graduates that have not been successful at college and the people that we place in general in the careers in these businesses and industry that we already have established, that's going to be our measure of success. And it's our goal to do this as fast as possible. I won't leave these to you. You can check these out, specific roles and responsibilities of districts. You know, kids need career plans, they need guidance, they need to be able to access careers, create portfolios. You've got to be able to provide them with the ability to walk into an employer, do a positive interview, understand what they're doing skills are, you know, all those things in order to meet the needs of the students. The other piece to think about, too, is that the state has come out with new regulations for career development in occupational studies, and it's important that we provide those to all the students and have them have access. And that's really kind of a new diploma track as well. And then, business and industries will provide us hopefully access. We have quite a... I've gone to many, I guess I shouldn't say many, I should give you the number. I think I've gone and done this presentation to six community groups, and I was actually here at the castle a couple months ago now, I think. And the chamber, Ray Pucci organized, obviously. And I think I spoke to 60 people, and when I was done, I was really impressed in the fact that I had, I stayed another 30 minutes after the presentation was over, and I had people lined up that wanted to talk to me and provide services and how do we get involved in the program. And so, that's really positive. And so, it's been well received by our business and industry folks. So, with that, I didn't obviously become a veterinarian. But I did pass English. And it's really quite an interesting story, and I'll just give you a little snippet of it. I went to Alprin for two years and then came home because I knew I had about five more years or six more years of veterinary school to go through. And being a young lad that liked to be outside, being inside for as many years as I had been in school, I wanted to take a year off before that all started. I was chopping a field of corn in the fall, and the local school board president, who was a farmer, came walking across the field, and he's, I stopped a tractor, obviously, talked to him. He said, "We've been through four ag teachers in the last five months. Are you interested in coming up and maybe applying for that job?" And I looked at it, "No, I'm not at all interested in that." Something happened in here, I guess. So, it's interesting, but again, I think that we have a pretty good opportunity here to be able to make some significant change in our community, hopefully. We're not too late, and we can do this in a timely fashion with your support and help. So, thank you.
Can you, one question?
Yep.
The 5,000 net loss by 2030, is that just the Bosse's region? Is that Cornell study is just this region right here?
Just our region.
So, is that localized?
Yep. Yep. That came from a Cornell study.
Yep.
And I have a question for you, too. You referenced the students that went to college, and for whatever reason it didn't work out well. Do you have anything in place for the students that graduate, really don't have interest in college, and looking directly to the work field, that they can get involved with a program with this now?
Yeah, and that's key because there's a couple of what we would... So, I didn't talk a lot about the funding, but you're kind of touching on how we can create those pathways to make it work. Because the other piece you have to stop and think about is those kids don't have money either, okay? So, how are we going to give them opportunity? And that's really what you're talking about. Okay, so, when you look at the opportunity piece of this, the, what we're hoping to do, and we're in the process of writing several different grants that will hopefully establish these pathways, and we're hoping that our business and industries will buy into the fact that they need to create apprenticeships for kids. And specifically, the kids in this group, okay, that have graduated, maybe didn't go to college, don't know what they want to do, or have gone to college and not been successful. And then, we would be able to bring them into the CTE programs during the day as adult students, and then we would be able to provide them with the training, hopefully. What we're hoping to do is streamline that training depending on the skill level, so there may be a six-month program, there may be a 12-month program, there may be a two-year program. But employ those kids at the same time in the business on a part-time basis. Because when you stop and think about it, if I'm employing somebody, and it doesn't matter whether you're a farmer or whether you're Raymond Corporation, you want somebody that's going to be responsible on time, be able to do the work that you're asking them for. And usually, what the best, the best way to find that person is to work with them and experience what they are able to give you. And that's what we've got to create, and when I talk about that relationship, that's really got to be a linchpin in this type of a program. So, we've got to identify those kids. Again, we need those local champions. And then, provide them with the knowledge and understanding of what the programs are, get the business and industries on board, hopefully with some apprenticeship programs, like I mentioned. Then get the kids to engage in that. And then, you know, give them the opportunity to be in it. If they don't like it, then allow them to get out of it. And then, you know, move them someplace else so that you're not wasting resources on training somebody that's not going to be successful. That's the other thing we've got to be very mindful of, is we can't, we can't take the limited resources we have and then apply them to that situation and then come up with 50% success. That's, that would, it's just not going to work, that piece, so. I get very passionate about all this, so I can talk to you a long time about it, so...
And I think your businesses that are involved in your CTE apprenticeship programs now, they're wonderful.
Yep.
I know my son went through it, and, you know, to have them, you know, take them on as a student while paying them and training them, it's amazing.
Yes.
It's amazing just to have that hands-on to make sure that the career path that they think they're going into is something that they're going to want to do day in and day out. It gives them that opportunity to make that decision.
And people worry a little bit, too, about transferring the knowledge and skills that we're providing them. The kids will get those, and then they'll go some other place. They may do that for a time. I've got a daughter that went to New York City. She grew up on a dairy farm. I couldn't believe she decided to go to New York City. She's gotten married now, and guess what she's doing? Moving back out of the city, upstate. She wants to raise a family. She just want to do it in the city. So, kids nowadays want experiences. They're millennials. Millennials are very interested in experiences, and that's another piece that we're working on. It's a little bit more nebulous than this. This is more tangible. But, you know, how do we create an environment where kids are interested in staying in this region because the experiences they're looking for are here along with the jobs? You know, I get very disappointed sometimes in my own daughters who aren't really concerned about their retirement because they're more interested in the experience of life. And they, basically millennials think that they're going to work for it. I mean, they really do. They don't, they don't think that there's going to be a retirement. My daughters are right there in that wheelhouse, so it's interesting, that piece.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too.
I'd like to invite Mr. Loomis to join me up here. He looks like he's getting a little uncomfortable over there. Come on, Mr. Loomis, go on up there. I need you to hold this for me.
How was everyone? Let's pass a few of these out. On March 25th, last Monday, Mr. Thomas, myself, Mr. Loomis attended the Utica Nationals Safety Conference. We participated in this particular program. This is our fifth year. The first year, we reached the platinum level, and the last four years, we've reached titanium level. There are several levels to this, to these awards. We have one higher that we can reach. They actually have a titanium with honors. With honors means we'd need to follow up with a lot of documentation on our policies and procedures. So, when we met with the administrative group the other day, I let all the administrators know that I'd be reaching out to them soon because if we can reach the, if we can reach the next level next year, we receive a $500 grant that we can use for whatever, you know, whatever we want to use it for. But during that safety conference, we, I think there were two presentations. One was led by a U.S. Secret Service member who went over the threats and how to see the signs of a child that may pose a threat to your district. The second one was done by Frank Miller, which everyone here knows. He gave a great presentation on the Parkland shooting down in Florida and how many instances and possibilities there were to actually maybe not prevent it, but to minimize it. I think over 150 schools received awards this year. Is there anything you'd like to add?
It was a good conference. It was relevant. I mean, I was personally able to pull a lot of stuff out of, from that conference and, you know, use it in my everyday... you know, use it in my everyday thinking that, you know, I'm doing now as a dean of students. So very valuable, it was good presentations by everybody and, you know, I think after looking at that presentation about the Parkland shooting and seeing the things that we already have an effect here, you know, I got a lot of confidence in things that we're doing, you know, headed up mostly by Rick here, but, you know, we are doing a nice job in keeping our students safe, I think. So, well-deserved award, I think.
So there is one of these missing. PJ Hardware and I went looking for all the different plaques to see what levels we finished during what year. And we found out one is sitting in Mrs. Frainer's office. So this is the fifth and we would like to present this to the board and Mrs. Rhonda Williams.
Very nice. Your hard work and even the entire safety committee, you know, they have done a wonderful job. They've worked hard. Well, on this, thank you to you.
All right. Here up to number seven, additions to the agenda. All right. We have the consent agenda. I would like to pull eight to F for further discussion and clarification that will have to move into an executive session. We'll pull eight to F. So we have the financial reports, the budget transfers. We have an establishment of a scholarship for John Markle. This will be a $250 annual scholarship for a graduating student who attends either a two- or four-year college. We have a resignation and this will be for Christine Ledson, food service helper. And then we have appointments. These are committees for the school business manager, different committees for the 1819, and this will be effective April 22nd. And then we have Kimberly Carr for a substitute teacher, substitute teacher aide, and a substitute school monitor. And then we have John Jackson being appointed as the asbestos designate. Athletic recommendations. Rich Machowski to fill the vacancy created by Crystal Wood for track volunteer. So do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. Number nine, new business. We have accept donations. We have $50 from Alice Blackman to the Walton FFA in memory of Dwayne Merrill. $50 from Alice Blackman to the Howard Merrill Memorial Fund. $25 from Bill Reiman to the class of 2020. $225 from Allison Isley Regus to the Destiny Twyman Scholarship Award. Then we have to the Walton Football Program in memory of Kathy Hoover. We have $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Richard Henrich. $100 from Mr. and Mrs. David Drew. $100 from Ellen Kraft. $170 from the Mack families. And then for the Walton Field Hockey Program in memory of Kathy Hoover, we have $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Frank Wood. $170 from the Mack families. And then for the Walton Central School Library System in memory of Kathy Hoover, we have $170 from the Mack families. Very nice. Do we have a motion to accept those donations?
Move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. We're up to 9B, the 1920 school calendar. Was there any questions on that?
I have one comment that I'd like to, the board to consider. In, in the summertime, the school goes to a four-day work week. The days are longer. All of the, all the obligations of the employees are appropriately longer to match up with the equivalent of a, of a five-day work week. And then typically the school building, as I understand it in the past anyway, has, everything closes down on Fridays. This results in a savings to the school district of around $1,000 each day that were closed. It was, I believe it was $1,000, so we talked. So on the current calendar, we, if you see, if you see the proposed calendar, I'm sorry, during July, we've got the Fridays all blocked out and then in August, we've got all the Fridays blocked out with the exception of one. And that's the one at the tail end of, of August. And given the way our calendar is laid out for the coming year and given the professional development that we have planned and things of that sort, I'd like to recommend that we add that on there and continue that same week with the elongated days and run four days and then have the 30th off as well. It wasn't that way this year, but it doesn't really change anything in terms of staff obligations. It doesn't change anything in terms of total hours worked, but it is part of the official calendar and I'd like the board to add that as an addendum on there or as an amendment to the calendar and then hopefully prove it the way it is, otherwise.
Yeah, I didn't see, I'm glad that we were following the, you know, more so following the Bosse's calendar. That'll help with our Bosse's students too. So do we have a motion to accept it as amended, having the district close on August 30th as well?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. We're up to number 10. We have the second reading of the policies. These, well, tonight will be declared the second reading of the policies. Grayden, would you do the honors?
Sure. Policy 0000, mission, vision, and belief statements. 0100, equal opportunity and non-discrimination. 0100E, equal opportunity and non-discrimination exhibit. 0110, sexual harassment. 0110E, sexual harassment exhibit. 0115, student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. 0115E, student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention exhibit. 0300, accountability. 0310, board self-evaluation. 0320, evaluation of superintendent. 1000, community relations goals. 1050, annual district election and budget vote. 1100, public information program. 1120, school district records. 1120E, school district records exhibit. 1130, news media relations. 1145, dissemination of materials through the schools. 1222, relationship with booster organizations. 1230, public participation at board meetings. 1310, staff participation at political activities. 1400, public complaints. 1420, complaints about curricula or instructional material. 1530, smoking and other tobacco use on school premises. 1740, relationship with non-public schools. 1741, homeschooled students. 1741E, homeschooled students exhibit. 1800s, donations, gifts, and grants to the district. 1900, parent and family engagement. 1900E.1, parent and family engagement exhibit one. 1900E.2, parent and family engagement exhibit two. 1925, interpreters for hearing impaired parents. 1925E1, interpreters for hearing impaired parents exhibit one. And finally, 1925E2, interpreters for hearing impaired parents exhibit two. All for second reading.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept these as the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. All right. We are up to number 11. This is our first time doing this, so I'm excited.
Me too.
Tenure appointments.
So we're going to ask our mentor administrators, our leaders in our school, to introduce our folks. And for you folks who are being honored tonight, we would just simply ask that you stand and remain standing until the board has actually done their vote. So once you're up, you're up, okay?
Well, I'm very happy to recommend three individuals this evening. I'll begin with Mr. Loomis. Mr. Loomis is being appointed to tenure in the area of health. Currently is working as a teacher on special assignment and he's functioning as the dean of students here and has been for several months. Believe me, I, of all people, is building him happy that he's here and certainly that Mr. Hoover would echo those statements. The next person I would like to ask to stand would be Ms. Ellen Neary. She's going to be appointed to tenure in the area of secondary mathematics. She currently is working to get her speech and debate club going to the state and national competitions and we're, just as a commercial for her, she's a little short on money, so she's going to have to do some fundraising. The next person, the final person in the high school, Mr. Taylor Arnold, could you stay in please? He also will be appointed to tenure area of secondary mathematics. Mr. Arnold and I have a history, interestingly. We grew up in the same zip code, but we didn't realize it until just recently. A little community in the northern part of the state called Faroe, New York. But more recently, I hired him some years ago. He was coming back from Florida, if I remember correctly, and he didn't have any teacher certification. I was a desperate need of a teaching assistant, so I gave him another start in education in New York. Before we could hire him as a math teacher, he got hired in Walton. At least I'm getting credit. Welcome, everyone, and congratulations from here.
It's my pleasure to introduce two of our middle school teachers. I'll start with Danielle Dobich. She's on the evidence here. She's going to be tenured in secondary math. She does a fantastic job working with seventh graders who aren't always the easiest age group to work with. And she, she does a ton of professional development to perfect her craft, which is awesome to see. And our second fantastic middle school teacher is Alyssa Novilio. She is currently teaching eighth grade science along with biology. She has taught seventh grade science last year, right? And she's going to be, going up for tenure in secondary science. And she does a lot of work with our, our plays and our drama club, does a fantastic, excuse me, fantastic job for that. So I'm very happy to, I guess nominate, not the right word, is it?
Yep.
To introduce these two fantastic teachers.
And for the elementary school, I'm very pleased to announce these five new candidates for tenure. First is Amanda Bauer. She's up for elementary education. She's taught third grade and second grade, has a strong literacy background, did some college teaching back in the day.
Still doing.
Still doing. Relatively new mom, how old now?
Eighteen, nineteen.
Nineteen months.
Wow.
So we're very pleased to have her and I want to congratulate her in elementary education. Next we have Ian Clarkin. And Ian Clarkin is up for elementary education. He teaches fourth grade. He's a Jets fan, just so you know. Long-suffering Jets fan. Also helped found with Nick Pembert, the League of Extraordinary Gentlemen and coaches. So we're very pleased to have him in general education for elementary education. So congratulations. Next we have Danielle Siler. She's up for tenure in special education. We were joking earlier that, with her and her boyfriend, that their, their life's dream is to start, what's the guy's name again?
Rob Dearday.
Rob Dearday. He's a motocross guy. He makes millions of dollars doing his own thing, so they're going to run off one day and start their own motocross.
Oh, if I'm ever a millionaire, I'll...
You got it.
He's someone that needs money for speech and debate.
I want Rhonda to read a donation. Next we have Jacquet Smith, up for elementary education. She works with our Math AIS students. And if you ever have a conversation with Jacquet, it will start with laughter. It will have, right now, see? This is what you hear when you have a conversation with Jacquet. It can be about the most dire subject and it's, it's lightened up because of her, her mood. And so, I mean, it's infectious, so I want to congratulate her. And then last, we have Crystal Wood, who is the third of four Mrs. Woods we have in the elementary school. And she's up for elementary education and is supposed to be quite the photographer and stuff, right? So I want to congratulate all five of them.
So to make this official, we have our tenure appointment for Alyssa Novilio, Arthur Loomis, Jacquet Smith, Crystal Wood, Amanda Bauer, Ian Clarkin, Danielle Slyer, Slyler, Ellen Neary, Danielle Dobich, Dobich, and Taylor Arnold. Do we have a motion to accept these tenure?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Congratulations. Congratulations on achieving this important milestone. Your principals, you know, have acknowledged your, and have confidence of your skill, your passion, your desire to educate our students. And more importantly, we are excited that you chose a path of education, becoming teachers, and that you're educating our students. So congratulations and thank you.
Should we take a break?
All right. We are going to take a brief break and celebrate this.
Maybe some of them are going for a different type of celebration. I don't know.
Really?
I don't know.
Maybe.
It's a very nice thing to do. It's a nice moment.
That was a very nice word, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
That guy over there helped out with this.
Thank you very much.
Helped us think about doing this.
Thank you.
Great idea.
All right, we are up to...
What? Music?
I'm like, where's that coming from?
See what you guys sound like? Sorry.
All right, we are up to number 12, administrative remarks.
I'll do a quick rundown where and see if anybody has anything that they want to have. You guys were here last time and had mentioned some stuff, so anybody have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to make a statement that the music department did a phenomenal job with the musical and it was an incredible presentation.
Yep, it was.
It was nice that they put a preview on for the student body on Friday afternoon. It's cool when the kids get to perform in front of their peers.
And it's so neat to see some of the Shire kids, you know, you see them out in public and, you know, they're polite and say hi, but to see them on that side of it, that was nice.
Some of my offensive lineman have some good dancing.
Yeah.
Singing the huddle. That's pretty good footwork.
You play next year.
It was very good.
Art, anything?
I don't have any.
Jane?
No, we, big date starts tomorrow. Youth state testing starts tomorrow, so I'd say we're in testing season. Keep us occupied for a while.
Mike?
Yeah, just testing, I was going to tell you that this is probably the only time this could ever happen because I was in the high school, middle school principal and at the end of the year, we were hiring replacements in the high school, middle school, so I interviewed people and made recommendations and then I transferred to the elementary school. So, except for Art Loomis, everybody there I interviewed and made the recommendation to the board.
How neat.
That's probably one, once in a lifetime opportunity.
That's right.
Just for that transition. But Art got interviewed by Andy because it was like we heard he was available, Andy was interviewing him and he got snapped up fast, so.
Very good.
Tim's going to be talking with finance a little bit later, but anything you'd like to toss out?
No, I don't want to do it twice. I mean, I already made fun that most of them just left because they heard I was going to talk.
So, we had a couple little things I just want the board to be aware of and other folks as well. We had a bus incident last week, unless I'm losing track of time here, where we had a busload of students. This is not a bad story, okay? Just go on, let's say that right up front. This is actually a pretty good story. And we had a small student who, a young student, who was choking and we believed, and the driver, who is, happens to be here tonight, had to take time to pull over and while he's pulling over, he's calling attention to the fact that we've got a kid back there, he's seen that it's having a problem. And we had another student step up and a student who had been trained in CPR and Heimlich and that sort of thing came over and provided the Heimlich maneuver to the student and all as well.
Oh, wow.
And it was, you know, it's a moment that you never want to see happen, but the fact that it did happen and we had somebody step up and I mean, and I think the event was just about all done by the time that we got the bus, the bus got pulled over and secured and because drivers got to take a moment to do that kind of stuff too. You've got other kids on the bus and, you know, so you've got to take care of that. So, you move quickly and try to move as best you can. Got up and things were well taken care of. So, we do have a little write-up that we're going to put together for, with PJ, he's going to try to, he's going to put it on our site and see some other things there and recognize the student. But it does also bring to the point the notion of making sure that when opportunities, when we have the opportunity to train our drivers and it gives...